Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to your village board meeting of September 12, 2024. I'm going to ask you all to please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for all those lives lost on that fateful day 23 years ago, including our own firefighter, Michael Montesin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, jumping right in, I will start with the Your Village Board introductions, starting at the far end, trustee James Freyband. Next to him is trustee Matt Fabro. Next to him, trustee Susan Suriello. Next to her is deputy mayor Vic Forelli. To his right is the village clerk Jessica McLennan. And I am your mayor, Andrew Giacamazza. So we begin with public comments on agenda items only. So the agenda is in the back on the table there. If anybody needs one, grab it in the meantime. Anything on the agenda is what I'm looking for anybody who wishes to speak. Without dropping your glasses, Lysette. Without dropping...
Hi, my name is Martha Lopez. On the agenda, it says moratorium, right? Does that mean that you're voting on it tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm a resident of Highland Mills, and I have a few questions regarding the consideration, if anyone is considering voting against the moratorium, and the reported lack of sewage capacity in our community. My goal is to help everyone fully understand what is meant by the statement that we've reached sewage capacity. I apologize if some of my questions seem pretty basic, but I want to ensure that we are clear and straightforward so that everyone, including those like me who are new to this issue, can understand. I hope to receive responses to these questions, or at the very least, have them considered in your decision-making process. I have a few questions. I can go through them and then come back to them one by one, but...
Go through them.
One, what does it mean to have reached sewage capacity? Are there specific metrics or data available that demonstrate how the current system is operating at its limit? Two, given the lack of sewage capacity, wouldn't it make sense to continue the building moratorium? Are there plans to maintain this moratorium? Three, is there anyone on this board who opposes to continue the building moratorium? If so, I would like to hear your reasons why. Four, are there any plans to expand or upgrade the sewage infrastructure? If so, what is the proposed timeline and what are the funding sources for these upgrades? Five, what is the county doing to help us expand our sewage capacity? Are there any collaborative efforts or resources being provided? Six, are any developers trying to influence the board to consider lifting the moratorium? If so, how are their interests being balanced against the community's needs and resource limitations? Will there be full transparency regarding any agreements or negotiations with developers, particularly concerning water and sewage resources? Two more, promise. Seven, how would lifting the moratorium align with the village's long-term sustainability and resource management goals? How does this potential decision fit into the village's comprehensive growth and development plan? Eight, how will the lifting of the moratorium affect current residents in terms of water availability, sewage management, and overall quality of life? What plans are in place to manage potential increased demands on these systems? These questions are crucial for ensuring the responsible management of our community's resources. Our community is seeking answers because without them, speculation and false accusations arise. We are at a point where we are fighting for the future of our town and every resident in it. We're deeply concerned about the impact that all this development is having on our water, air, and overall health. We have seen these stories play out time and time again, with many communities ending up on the losing side. We need to stand up for our beloved town, and I appeal to all of you sitting up there to stand up for us as well. Many of us have been your neighbors for decades. We've watched our families grow, you've watched our families grow, seen our children grow up and get married, and shared in the mourning of our loved ones. You are part of the fabric of this community. So I appeal to you to demand that our assembly members, senators, governors, county executives do right by us, not just those with special interests. Please commit to doing everything you can, for as long as you can, to keep Woodbury free from the influence of special interests and focus on the needs of its people. Encourage your community to fight alongside you. Tell us, as our elected officials, what we need to do to be heard so that we too can protect what's left of our town. Help us rise up and fight along, help us rise up, and I want you, I'm appealing to you, to fight alongside of us for our home. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Stay there.
Yes.
I'll have you stay there because you had a lot of numbers.
I have a lot of...
Yes, so that way you can help me because I'm getting to that age. So, right now, what we're talking about this evening is going to be water, moratorium, and continuing the water moratorium. Now, it is a process that began under the last board in terms of correcting or fixing the general problem, because we have kind of outgrown the amount of water that we are able to pump out of the ground. So we have begun that process by putting Well 12 online, and that was a huge assist this summer. What was also a huge assist for us was the fact that we had so much rain. So prayers do help. The biggest problem we are facing in Woodbury right now is not water, because I can drill and get to the water underground. What I cannot do is drill to get down under the ground and find sewer capacity, because the sewer capacity is an issue in Woodbury. It is the biggest issue that we are facing, and it hasn't really been discussed enough. Okay? Our sewer capacity, we are at a minus right now. Okay? We are overcapacity, and that has to do with larger families and growth and building and everything else like that. It is not a problem that this board can solve. Okay? There are things that we can do, like I and I work to check the system and correct, like water getting into the system, but ultimately, it is the county's responsibility. Okay? The county is the one that, where all our sewage goes to, and it has been an ongoing problem for several years. Now, we've met with the county to discuss what their plans are moving forward. Their plan really for sewer is a four- to five-year plan, and there really is no solution that is right this minute. So there's not much that I can do, other than building a sewer plant here, and I don't think anybody here wants it in their backyard. I don't have that type of, those type of resources, because we're not the ones getting the grant money here in Woodbury for something of that nature. So sewer, 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 you are going to be hearing it a lot, but it is. That is the bigger problem right now. Okay? Water, we're getting there, but sewer, I can't fix, I honestly cannot fix. Not Mickey, not us. I need the county's help to expand the plant. Orange County, as you all know, because you all live here, is expanding and it's expanding and it's expanding. So I need them to help us. So we've got some upcoming meetings with them, again, to kind of review this some more, but really, the ultimate solution is the expansion of the Harriman Plan. Once the plan is expanded, then we'll be in good shape. But otherwise, for right now, four to five years, and I am seriously considering that the next moratorium for Woodbury should be on sewer. Okay? So it is something that we are, or I'm seriously considering. I've talked to our consultants about. So it will be upcoming to introduce that next.
Yeah, I would think that that was smart, right? Being that, well, the capacity as it is...
Broken pop is right, right today, at least, right?
Right. Thank you so much.
All right, you got it, Martha. I think, like, in terms of, there's really not much I can do. I can't talk upgrades, it's not, there's nothing like that we can do.
How disheartening. And there isn't anything that the community can do to assist you along the way in speaking to the...
No. The running joke I had for sewer was that, you ever see Shawshank Redemption? So where they break through the wall and they drop the dirt everywhere in the yard? Ladies and gentlemen, see, the attorney is not even... I thought that was a good, I thought that was a good idea. Anyway, anyone else?
Jimmy, Highland Mills. Ditto to everything Martha said about the moratorium. So on agenda items only. I know you guys are gonna look at Scoofus's proposal again.
Yep.
And before anyone who votes against it, do so after you watch a South Blooming Grove board meeting, or whatever you call it. So I've been waiting for a long time for this. An opportunity to speak about Rob and Desiree. You guys are the perfect examples of, you know, who I want as neighbors and friends. So I've seen Desiree, town clerk, treasurer, you wear more hats than Maria Hunter. You are knowledgeable laws, the rules and regs, and, you know, just everything that governs the town and village. At the same time, you have that comprehensive knowledge of the history of Woodbury. And I've seen you in action. You gently guide and advise, not always taken, but you try, and I thank you for that. Rob, I love you.
If you say anything too nice, I'm gonna have to give praise.
In so many ways, you are a first-sender. Fire, police, EMS, you're there. You know, we've had some major storms, some really difficult situations, and you're there. You and your team, we count on you. I mean, you guys keep the roads in better shape than in the city. This is corny line, but you know what? No uniform or badge, but you truly deserve a cape sometimes for what you do. When I'm hunkered down inside with my family, you're out there doing what you do. I purchased a book recently. I hope I'm talking about you. Images of America, the Woodbury Orange County edition. 1951, Robert Wyant was the first full-time police officer?
That wasn't me.
I was gonna say, you look good. It was, I'm amazed. Tell me the secret.
Can we scratch that from the record?
But I'm assuming, but I'm assuming that's family? Is that family?
Absolutely.
Well, I just want to say, you make your family proud. Thank you.
Very well said, James.
Maria Hunter, I don't know how many hats I wear, Desiree, you and I are tied, I think. Martha, thank you so much for being up here and being very concise in what you said. I back you up 100% on that. Jimmy, thank you for backing up Martha.
Are you backing me up or her?
Both of you. You backed up her, I'm backing up you who backed up her. I'm backing you all up. Thank you so much for speaking up and telling, and saying to this board what we all feel. Our water is precious. We need to stay within this building moratorium, and whatever this board does tonight, do it correctly, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Anyone else? Here we go.
Chris Graziano, Highland Mills, I got a couple of comments. First off, I see on your agenda tonight, you have the resolution again for the Scoofus idea of merging the boards. I hope you've all taken into consideration how ridiculous it is and the lack of any savings you're gonna wind up whatsoever, and the dangers that can occur because of that, and voted completely down today. I look forward to you guys completely disinterested, disinteresting yourselves from that. Secondly, to help you out a little bit, Martha, the village is a collection system, so the county is the treatment system. So for the most part, so what all the village is doing is collecting the sewer and putting it and pumping it, and the county's treating it. So once the county's out of capacity, you're out of capacity. You can only treat so much sewage, and then you stop. And what you don't want to do is run the risk, you know, you can go on paper as a deficit, but what happens when you hit that wall of a deficit is not as pleasant as a water deficit. A sewer deficit means people's things start backing up into your house, things start overflowing your own toilets from the sewer mains, things come out of your drains. That's what a real sewer deficit is, and that's what we do not want in Woodbury. Now, when you look at things, and when Tara and I first kind of got together and said, we're gonna kind of try and help Woodbury and run for office, one of the biggest things we said was, we're not against growth, but growth that's not responsible is not responsible. And that's just the way it is. Growth is a good thing, but you have to make it sustainable. And if you don't have a sustainable pattern and a plan for growth, you're going to mess it up, and you're going to have a huge issue. And this is where you're winding up now, is we're at a crossroads now where we're trying to repair the water system, and these guys are doing a great job, and Mickey and your crew, you guys are doing fantastic. We're getting there, we're making gains on water, but as Andrew said, you can drill for water. We can't magically make sewer capacity. You don't want to build a sewer plant in Woodbury. A sewer plant for this village is gonna be north of $50 million for the size of this village. You don't want to do that, there's not a tax base here that you want to construct that. The county's project is gonna be north of $100 million to expand the plant, and it's not a fast thing to work on sewer infrastructure. It's going to take four to five years to do it. There's interested stakeholders that are downstream as well that are gonna have a say in what the county does, because the county's waste goes into the headwaters of the Ramapo River, which provides water service for people, hundreds and thousands of people downstream. So there's gotta be a treatment plan for that in order to put that discharge into the Ramapo River Basin. So there's a bunch of things that have to go in the right order at the right time in order to do this, and what you don't want to do is overburden a sewer system, because that could be the worst mess you're ever gonna see, literally. So don't do it. I implore the board, you gotta look at your sewer. If you're at capacity, you gotta shut it down. It's the only right thing to do for the existing people of Woodbury. Lastly, Rob, I love you, you know that. You're a shoo-in. Glad to have you back. Desiree, I don't think anybody, when I first got elected, got along worse than you and I. Ever in history. We got off to a rocky start, but our relationship grew, and now we love each other, and I respect you beyond words. Everything you've done, everything you've provided, all the influence, the knowledge you have, the guidance you've given, because you know, my whole thing with government is, we can't move fast enough. I want to do this, this, and this, and you're like, no, we can't do that, because we have to follow this procedure. You know, I don't, I get very impatient with that type of thing, because I'm used to private industry where we have a problem, we solve said problem and move on. Can't do that in government. There's some layers you have to go through, and you were really kind enough to come out and calm down and, you know, get me calm and explain those layers to me, and I really appreciate that. And you deserve everything you get, because you are an asset beyond an asset, and Woodbury's great. Really glad to have you and lucky to have you. So thank you, and that's what I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graziano. Anyone else? Public comments? Agenda items only.
Hello, everyone. So I just, I just want to make sure that...
Your name?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Saideh Muslim.
There you go.
I'm living in the Central Valley for the last, I think, 15, 16 years. I just want to make sure, you know, what the agenda is. So the resolution, the opposing Scoofus thing. So we can talk about that.
We can talk about it. This is the perfect time to talk about it.
I know. First of all, I really appreciate, you know, hearing about, you know, the people, how we are interested in the infrastructure of the town, and we are working on that. But my thing that I just need to do more research, and the ball is gonna be in Desiree court and Maria Hunter court, because you know the history, what's going on. And when you go back to me, I mean, to solve an issue, to bring people together from the village to the town, to the estate, to the national, is just working collaboratively together and talk about the issues, whatever comes, in an open forum, and just ask the candidate, you know, the question straightforward. So my thing is, Scoofus is claiming that two board and for village and town are not necessary, and I think what he argues is, his reasoning is, there are expenses involved. And I want to hear Desiree's opinion based on your experience, and you were involved in town before the village was formed, right? So there was a town, and the village was created in 2008, 2006, 2000. So we had a mayor who was nice enough to come to the senior center and explain that, you know, what's happening, but with all due respect for the new member, going back to the source where the thing started, is gonna help us to see what's going on. So it would help us with our vote. What happened is, my question to you is, when the board, I mean, when we asked, Mr. Caruso was there on that day that you came, and he was one of the people who were involved in organizing that thing for, you know, forming the village, what was, he was saying was, and he was trying to be careful with the language, that preventing a village being formed within a village, something like that happened in my role, annexation. And the goal, when I asked what the goal was, was to stop overcrowding and the other religion or whatever, and the developer. Then my next question was, 2008, now we are 2025, almost 18, 19 years has passed, what has been the result of it? What I see, I don't know about the other members, there's overdevelopment, Woodbury Common is expanding like whatever, and also people are coming in from different religion, nationality. So if it didn't achieve its purpose and its goal, why should we, what do you think, based on your experience, for us as the resident of this town? What would be in the benefit of the community? To be clear, and to bring that harmonious relationship that together we can go get the funds, take care of our sewage treatment, take care of the water, instead of just sitting back and saying, this can be done, that cannot be done?
You okay? Or I can do it?
I will do my best to answer your question. The answer will be opinion, obviously, because you did ask, you know, that kind of thing. So I believe when the village was formed in 2006, a petition was circulated to form said village. It was a group effort. Michael Queenan was involved, Ralph Caruso was involved, a couple of other people. Many meetings were held to explain to the public what the village was gonna be about. There was a little bit of misinformation about certain things, about it only costing a dollar and whatnot. Obviously, that's not possible under state law. And then during the period after the village was formed, certain things had to transfer from the town to the village under operation of village laws. So the village was formed in August of 2006, is when it was actually incorporated, after an election held earlier that month. Then June 1 of '07, the building, planning, and zoning became a village function. Then January 1 of '08, any special districts that existed, which included water, sewer, and fire, ceased to exist and became village functions. And then in 2016, the highway department came to the village. So as those departments switched to the village, they were then no longer part of the town, so your town taxes went up and your village taxes went up. When the village petition was circulated to form the village, the purpose and the reasoning stated, and I don't have it word for word memorized, but it was about to protect the quality of life and the zoning in Woodbury. I don't know if it focused mostly on residential, on commercial zoning, I think it was more focusing on residential zoning. So the village has one acre, two acre, three acre zoning, and I don't think the people who petitioned the village wanted less than a one acre zoning or half acre zoning area that is experienced in other parts of the county. In my opinion, having 10 people decide on whether property can be annexed or whatnot is better than five. And if you didn't have the village of Woodbury, you could have individual villages throughout the community. You could have a village of Woodbury Junction, you could have a village of Brigadoon, you could have a village of Skyline, you could have a village of Country Crossings, all with their own zoning, that they would be in charge of all their own zoning. So by having the village, it gives a protection to the community so that you don't have spot zoning in all different areas by these little villages being formed. That's my opinion on what would happen if the village didn't exist. What Mr. Scoofus is proposing, whether it's a dissolution or consolidation, I'm not one to know, because I'm not privileged to that information, I'm not in conversation with him, but I don't believe it is a good thing for Woodbury, even though he says, any politician who says they don't believe it's because they are benefiting from it. That's my opinion. I hope that answers your question.
I'm trying to absorb, yeah. Thank you so much for sharing it just at you. So basically, you think it's better to have the village and the town?
I think 10 people making a decision about what happens in this community that I have lived in for 50 years, born and raised, is more important than living it up to five people.
And then you said mainly, in your opinion, the purpose was more for residential, not the commercial.
I believe it was more for residential than commercial. You know, our commercial property is south of Woodbury.
Mayor knows that.
Yeah, Woodbury Commons. And, right, and keep in mind, if that's not commercial, it would be residential, and then your school taxes would be even crazier. You know? If Woodbury Commons wasn't there, can you imagine that being all houses? I wouldn't want that to be all houses, your school taxes would be out of control.
Woodbury Common is the landmark of the community and provides the job for everyone in the community.
I mean, I started working there when I was 16. I never had to drive more than five miles to work, so I can't, I can't complain.
So that's the thing. No, this issue of favoritism.
Favoritism?
Or nepotism, that's...
Oh, I...
That's the other board.
That's the other board?
I don't, we don't have like a nepotism problem.
Okay.
I'm not changing the ethics law. We did form, regardless of what the town attorney said, the ethics committee is formed. It's done. We picked our five members at the last meeting.
Oh, the ethics forum committee is formed?
They had their first meeting today.
Oh.
Okay, so we hit the ground running.
So it is online, so what you are saying, the ethics committee is formed, and they're gonna deal with the issue. And I have a suggestion, in order to make a better decision, would it be okay if you involve Scoofus, come here, like an open forum, forum, and we ask our questions?
As I said at my last meeting, he has no interest in meeting with me.
With you? Because you are a very...
I have the emails. I have the emails. He has no interest in meeting with me. I have no interest, I have, I will meet with him, because I know there, it's a concern of my residents, because I have been at the senior center, or I have been at various other things, whether it's Jade Stelly and I'm holding court there. So I know it's a concern of residents, and I have yet to hear anybody say they were in favor of this. Okay? Nobody has come up to me and said, I love Scoofus's plan, let's move forward, print it on a T-shirt, make a movie of the week. Nobody has said that to me yet. Okay? So, but if Mr. Scoof, I'm available.
When you say you are available, that you have to have a vote of other members?
If any board member wants to come, that's fine, but I have no...
But you can have that.
Meeting with him, he knows how to get hold of me.
I see.
Okay.
So the ethics committee, I have a question for the legal representative, Kelly, right? If I say it... Yeah. So the role of the attorney for the village, you are the attorney for the village, right? And how long you've been the attorney for the village?
I've been working with the village since it was, not since it was, since December of 2006.
Oh.
And except for the period between 2011 and 2014, so about 15 years.
Wow, you look so young, so 15 years. I mean, like Desiree said, 50. So almost, so you were there from the very beginning of the, you know, forming the village. Were you part of the Michael Berg's firm first, and then you joined Michael Berg, Millet? Millet, yeah. And at any point was he the attorney for the village?
Well, he handled some of the criminal matters.
I see.
That was myself and Rick Golden.
I see, I see, Golden. So in your opinion, if the mayor doesn't mind, this is my last question. Desiree said it, in your opinion, the legal matters and everything, what happens, the performances of the village, and the pace is going, what do you think about?
Dissolution of the village?
Yeah. I mean, keeping it or just?
Yeah, so I, that is actually a more policy decision and political decision for the village, so I would weigh in on that.
You just make the legal. Thank you so much, thank you for everybody.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Public comment on the agenda? The agenda is up? Well, there's nothing left. Sold out. Hi!
Hi, good evening. Jacqueline Hernandez, Highland Mills. I just wanted to say good evening to everybody here, everybody's in the audience. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the old business items that have been covered that you're allowing us to comment on. The first is the moratorium. When I was on the town board, I had the opportunity to go to, to go visit our processing plant. And I was given a full tour of everything that was there, and I want to say that was in 2019, before COVID. And during that time, I recall asking questions about, you know, what areas are being processed by that plant? And what would happen if there was significant growth over a short period of time? And besides the fact that they were understaffed, I think there was like several people that were looking to retire, and they didn't retire because there was nobody behind them to do the wonderful work that they do with our, with our seclusion. But they, but he was very kind to explain to me that at that time, there was a 20% buffer that they had at that time. And that 20% buffer is usually provided so that we don't run into the situations that CJ was talking about, where you have your septic, I mean, not your septic, your sewers backing up into your home. And so I asked him, you know, if we had quick growth in a community, how would that impact? And what are the areas? And all of the communities in our area, for the most part, that run up that area on 17, filter through there. And he also talked about the impact it was having on Aramapo Water System, and how it was severely contaminating water, because there's other businesses that are located on 17 that dump large amounts of salt into the river. So there's a big environmental issue that, of course, when I first started to get involved in politics and the environment and advocating, the biggest issue was, how are we preserving our water system? How are we preserving the community? And at that time, I live in Highland Mills, very close to Cornwall. That's when the pumping station was put up. And I was part of the resistance in Cornwall to stop them from, stop, you know, the building plan that they had, because they were pulling water from one location and taking it to another. And that was unheard of, right? You usually take water from one area and you supply the water to that community. Ours was being pumped, and me being across the street from the pumping station, it's the first time that I've ever pooled water. I get my water tested every year, been here since 2003. I'm septic, I'm not on the system. It was the first time ever that I actually am starting to get bacteria in my water. And what does that mean? What does that mean? It means there's a drawdown. And that drawdown, people say, well, there's enough water that's pumping and pumping. Well, it's not. And now my water levels are so low that now I'm pulling probably from some animal stuff that's going on, whatever's going on in a community. And that's just my little, my little abode up in Highland Mills. Now, when you take what's going on in Blooming, Blooming Grove, I'm like Blooming Grove, I'm thinking of Upper, if you, there's issues up there too, that's why, I'm following everything. When you think about what's going there, right, and you look at that water, right, you kind of think to yourself, that's one issue, right? It's the ability for land to continue to provide water. And when people think about New York City, right, they're pulling from the Catskills, right? There's a huge pipeline that goes and supplies water to New York City, right? We don't have that pipeline, we don't have access to that pipeline, right? But we've watched pipes go in to provide that. So in addition to, you know, the sewer capacity, I go back to the basics, which is, a house without water is worth nothing, right? And as a community member, I want to make sure that, again, going back to planning and remembering that there's a limitation that the land can provide. The land provides resources, we have resources to clean the water that's being used, those resources at that time was almost at capacity, so at this time, I don't know what that looks like now. But, you know, I feel on a larger level, as on a county level, we really need to address these issues. And building new homes at this time, or anything at this point, I believe, should be the least of our discussions. We should be looking at planning our community in a way that's sustainable, that protects our environment. I mean, you know, the trout brook, that, you know, we love to dump trout in every year, it's not spawning anymore, right? And there were advocates back then that protected that trout. And, you know, now it's, it's become a lot more difficult to do the things like fishing with our kids, because it's depleting, the value, I mean, the cleanliness of the brook has been compromised. The other item that I wanted to just speak about, so, I mean, for the moratorium, I would, you know, let me just finalize, I would really impart on the village board that what, if your decision is to continue the moratorium, that you have members of the community supporting you in this, we need to get our ducks in order before we even think about doing anything, any expansion or anything else on that side. And then as far as the town and the village. So I used to be on the town, and I know there was lots of history between the town and the village when I started. The one thing that I will say, and I had these discussions, regardless of what history happened at that time, taking a step back and not being on any of the boards, to see the people who are genuinely fighting for our community, I applaud you. I applaud you for being the gatekeepers of our community, of doing what's right for our community. And regardless of, you know, when people say their savings, et cetera, that discussion did not occur five years ago. That discussion briefly was brought up by my own husband, who ran at one time, and then the numbers were shown. There's not huge savings in that, but what's the most important thing? The most important thing is just what it was stated, 10 people protecting our community, rather than five who could decide the fate of our community. And so on my part, I do ask that you oppose that. I don't care if we got a picket for that, that's exactly what we need to do. But our boards, I believe, do a wonderful job in what they're asked to do, and I thank the village for what you do.
Anyone else? Nope. Actually, that was a fake. I thought she was going to the podium. Go ahead, Neil, go ahead. I know, but I thought she was heading there.
I did too, I did too.
Hi, Susan McConnell, Highland Mills. So I want to talk about the moratorium a little bit. First, though, I would like to thank this board. I am new to attending meetings. I was at last week's meeting. I was really shocked by the behavior of our board when public comment is occurring. So I appreciate the eye contact. I appreciate the active listening that is occurring today. Because I would hope, while you're sitting there, hearing public comment from all of us, your minds are not made up. I would hope that while you're sitting there, you're listening to public comment to help guide you. Because public comment is not just those that oppose. Public comment is to say, Desiree, you're doing a great job, and we love having you there. Public comment is to support Rob Wyatt, we like having you there, you're doing a great job. It's not just the negative. So my history is, I grew up at 8 Hawksnest Road in Monroe, which is South Blooming Grove, Marywold. In, I don't know years, Desiree's great at that, but I was older than 18, but not yet 23, when the village of South Blooming Grove was trying to be created. It was trying to be created to stop the little villages from happening, have one big village. I think our moratorium is important, because we have to have sustainable growth. We have to be able to support our sustainable growth. So I would urge you to keep that in mind. Because my home, where I grew up, is no longer sustainable, and there is growth going on. The second point is Senator Scoofis. I think it's important for everyone to hear, yes, having 10 people is better than five, but we have to vote for those 10 people. So we have to make sure that whether it's 10 or it's five, it's people who are working for us. It's people who are listening to us. It's people who want the community to be an active participant in what happens within the community. So I'd urge you to keep the moratorium there. Stop the unchecked growth. And I urge the rest of our community, we want, whether it be five or 10, people to work together for the same community we all moved into, that we would all like to keep. Thank you.
Neil, it's your turn. It's your turn. While we wait for Neil to make his way to the podium.
Neil Kraus, Highland Mills. I hope I remember what I want to say. And I hope.
You said that. I didn't. It didn't come out of my mouth.
And I hope I do not ramble. For 12 years, I sat where you're sitting. We were lucky. We had two women that I'm looking at, Desiree and Kelly, who helped us when to form a new government, because nothing existed before 2006. For 12 years, we struggled. Tim, I think Tim is here. All those nights when Desiree and I were in your kitchen, going through the town laws and converting everything over to the village, remember, Desiree? And Kelly was there too. I mean, village wouldn't be where it is now without those two. You asked what we can do? We can support our village board. Because I favor you continuing the moratorium on building, and putting a moratorium in place for sewer. And I'll tell you what's going to happen. Those people who want to use it will threaten to sue. Over the years, I can't remember, we got where we tried to contain stuff, and at the end of every single application was a stamp that said, if we don't get what we want, we reserve right to sue. So what we can do is understand that as you go forward, you're going to get applications, and you're going to get threats of people filing suit. What we can do is understand that as a community. We can support that, and you're going to have to understand, it may cost money to do it, but it's worth it. It's worth it to every single, I hope, every single person in this room, and I hope it's very important to every single person sitting at the table. In 2006, when the village was first formed, and I will tell you now, I voted against the village. But then, as I said, I served as, and the original board, and I served until the end of 2018, when I said, eh, give somebody younger and with new ideas a chance, and I decided not to run again. I am losing, because I'm emotional about this. But in 2006, we received from Albany, basically from the state senate, saying that you wanted to be a village, you voted for a village, there are 500 and some villages in the state of New York, you are not, you're no different than the other 500-plus villages, you will follow the same laws and regulations that they have to follow. And that's where I think Desiree gave a very good summary of, for instance, the building we're standing in right now, the fire district was told, there wasn't going to be any change. Oh, you're going to remain a district. And then Albany came down and said, you have to form, you have to become a department. If you don't become a department, you can no longer fight fires. Your volunteers cannot get on that truck. That truck cannot roll out on 32 and go fight a fire unless you become a department. The same thing happened with the other departments. Water and sewer, highway and everything, you had, by a certain date, by a date certain, we had to assume responsibility for it. Albany told us, you will not be a shell of a village. You will not be a shell for people. You will be a village. You will do what the other 500-plus villages do. You will do, villages are formed to serve their residents, to provide concentrated services where concentrations of people live. Fire, water and sewer, highways, and I'll go, and other services as well. They're the responsibility of the village. This village, this village board, I think, I hope has it in you to not follow what Senator Scoofis is saying. I've walked Senator Scoofis's information to every door in Woodbury. I sponsored a fundraiser for him and everything like that. I am very disappointed in this one thing. I've known James since he was in high school, and this is the first time I'm disappointed in an action he's taking. I firmly believe it is in the very best interest of Woodbury that you not go with any consolidation, and that you do continue on with the water, the building, moratorium, and that you impose a sewer moratorium. It is our home, it is our community, and we have to count on you, because you represent us. When you're sitting up there, you're not representing yourself, you're representing us. You're representing the interests of your neighbors. You're representing the interests of your neighbor and the person you may not know. But those are the people you represent. Not any special interest, nothing like that. And at that point, I'm going to say, I finished. I hope I didn't ramble too much.
Now I gotta wait for you to walk back to your seat. Do you need my? 20 years? There you go. Rob is, guess, because 1951.
Mr. Crusoe, right?
No.
No.
Kraus.
That's Mr. Kraus.
Mr. Kraus, thank you so much.
Mr. Crusoe is much taller.
Oh.
And he's Italian too.
He was. No, it's great to see the old timers. What I mean by that, no, 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 the elder, the wisdom they have and what they share, they give us the perspective of what's going on. And thank you so much for sharing that. As you said, I mean, when you said you were disappointed with Scoofus, because I want to clearly understand what's going on. Because he's disagreeing with the formation of the village?
No, it's for proposing the consolidation or getting rid of it.
Maybe it's better if you talk to Neil.
Later?
Yes. Neil will basically.
Where can we find you, Mr. Neil? We need, or maybe we have a meeting.
After the meeting.
Yeah, just come and explain to us. So we have a more informed.
Make sure you bring baked goods.
What happened?
Because that's my only requirement.
Say that again?
Baked goods.
I'll bake next time.
I like pastries.
I'm not a good baker.
Not good for my diabetes, but.
He's welcome to come to the senior center. So thank you. Yeah, they bake good things.
Anyone else with public comment on agenda items only? Going once, going twice?
I'm a big believer that the reporters should always speak last and the community first. So first, I just want to point out, I parked all the way by the library and had to, you know who I am. But for those of you who don't know, and thank you for calling me, sir, I very much appreciate that, because we're going to have a nice conversation at the end of this meeting. My name is BJ Mendelson. I'm with the Monroe Gazette.
Direct your comments this way.
Oh.
They're going to hear it, I think.
Well, first, I'd like to thank everybody, because I parked all the way over at the library and had to walk my bony ass all the way down up to this fine building. So you all deserve a round of applause for coming out. And it's nice to see everyone being treated respectfully by at least one village government here in Woodbury. Now, I'm here to talk about two items on the agenda. Most of this has already been touched on, so I won't beat a dead horse. I will, however, ask a question. Does anyone know what the fine is if you do not have enough water to provide to your residents? Mr. Fryban, do you know what that fine is?
This is not a question and answer.
Do you know what the fine is?
You don't, James, you trust Steve Fryban, you don't have to answer.
He doesn't. But I thought I'm giving him an opportunity to ask, and I'm making sure that everyone sees he had an opportunity to answer a question. The fine is $2,000 a day. If your municipality continues to build and does not have enough water to sustain their current number of residents and provide them with adequate water, it is $2,000 a day issued by the Orange County Department of Health. I know that because I spent a ridiculous amount of time investigating the situation in South Blooming Grove. That brings me to the second point here. You might have heard about these bullshit magic wells that Mr. Wayne Quartz claims to have. These, oh, pardon me, I'm not used to having children in the audience when I'm speaking. These magic wells, you might have heard a lot about. Mr. Quartz says they're beautiful wells. He's in a recorded conversation from 2022 with Mr. Tyler Edsall, who's running for the village board, talking about how these wells will solve all of the problems. And Mr. Fryban has touted these wells to everyone under the sun. However, trustee Fryban has not complied to a single FOIL request to provide any information concerning the wells. Does anyone know what the fine penalty is for that? I'm going to speak to everybody.
I don't believe there is any.
Don't believe there's what?
I don't believe there is any penalty.
There is a penalty for not complying with FOIL requests. It's enforced by Orange County's District Attorney, and I had a nice conversation with him today about trustee Fryban. The public deserves to know whether or not these wells exist, whether or not they can actually produce the water that Mr. Quartz and Mr. Fryban and Mr. Kellerman and Mr. Edsall claim that they can. So far, we have not been provided with any information about this. The last point on the building moratorium is that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has not been notified by Orange County about their intention to build a huge facility to treat the wastewater going into the Ramapo. As mentioned, there are 2 million people who depend on the water from the Ramapo, who would be impacted by Orange County Sewer District 1. So if you think that this is going to happen anytime soon, I promise you, the state of New Jersey has something else to say. For that reason, this board should immediately entertain a sewer moratorium in addition to the water moratorium. Let's talk about Senator Scoofus. He has not shown up to a single meeting since the discussion began. He has not gone to a single meeting in South Blooming Grove despite the fact that South Blooming Grove residents do not have clean drinking water. They do not have clean air. He is nowhere to be found. You know where Senator Scoofus is? He's palling around with members of our town board, one of whom assaulted a disabled teenager after they asked him to put on a mask. And the other one is working a part-time job, giving herself full-time pay and currently overriding an ethics law. That's who Senator Scoofus chooses to spend his time with. He is not here, he is not with the people, but he has time to share his delusions and paranoid fantasies with trustee Fabro about people being out to get him and questioning the mayor's integrity. He refuses to meet with the mayor. Not once has Senator.
Mr. Mayor, the question is supposed to be on topics on.
Yes, and we are speaking about Senator Scoofus's resolution. I know that there's, you know, the marbles in there aren't all clicking, but.
BJ, just.
Yes.
Let's try and keep it not too personal.
The point here I like to make is this. As some of you might be aware, the town of Monroe is about to be sued by the village of Monroe and the village of Harriman. The town of Blooming Grove is about to be sued by the village of South Blooming Grove. Where is the senator? This whole thing about Woodbury and we need a unified board, it's political theater. It's being done for the sole purpose of drumming up support to make sure he gets reelected. That's what this is about. It has nothing to do with zoning. It has nothing to do with saving you money, because as Desiree has pointed out, the cost savings is minimal at best. So I'm going to urge this board to work for the people, the people, Mr. Fryban, and vote and say to Senator Scoofus, take a hike. I'm going to ask you to vote for the building moratorium. I'm going to ask you to vote for a sewer moratorium in the best interest of the people who you are here to work for. And I'll be back later, because we're going to have a nice chat.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Public comments on agenda items only. Going once, going twice? Hey, Chris, Chris, Chris. Fix the mic and turn it.
Hi, I'm Nancy Severides. I'm actually from the village of Harriman, the other village that does belong to Woodbury. And I also live on River Road, so I'm very familiar with the sewer district number one. And you're talking now that they may be expanding it, which I'm sure is desperately needed. I hope it doesn't happen anytime soon, because right now, on the day when there's no wind, it does not smell very nice driving through there. And I can just see that things will be getting worse. So I do hope that the board here will support the moratorium. And I just had to represent the village of Harriman, because sometimes we get forgotten.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? Going once, going twice? Rob's going to fake a set again. Do you want to speak to her or is Rob speaking?
No, Rob's speaking.
Is he really?
Rob's speaking.
No, Rob is going to the bathroom. They all think you're. Now we all know.
Yeah, man.
Go ahead. No, you're good? All right. All right, moving on, ladies and gentlemen, moving on to administrative business. Can I have a motion in a second to approve receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on August 8, 2024?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, can I have a motion in a second to approve receipt of the minutes of the work session held between the village and the town held on August 12, 2024?
So moved.
Right, second?
All second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain and Vic?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain too. Okay, so I have two abstentions. Okay, village clerk McLennan, will you please read abstract, let's see, six?
Check six contains vouchers 24250463 through 24250583 and totals $327,558.19.
All righty, can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract six?
So moved.
Motion.
Second, what about, the motion was made by trustee Fryban, seconded by trustee Fabro?
Actually, it was Sue, I think.
Okay, Sue with the second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, village clerk Jessica McLennan, once again, abstract seven, will you please read?
Abstract seven contains vouchers 24250584 through 24250704 and totals $344,116.20.
All right, can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract seven as read?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear. Has that abstract been signed?
Yes.
Actually, one, you just reminded me, actually, hold on.
I don't want to get into a situation here where we're approving it before they've been signed.
We need a second. Signature on this voucher, and then there's one marked AG.
Did you sign?
Well, I signed, no one else did.
Sue, would you just sign up?
Sure. I don't know, the other one, for some reason, is marked for you.
All right, moving right along. All in favor?
Aye. And just point of order, you can approve the abstract without the voucher being signed. We just hold the check until you actually sign the voucher. Thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome. All right, motion in a second to approve fire department equipment request 14 of 2024 for the purchase of two water rescue suits and fire prevention books and materials totaling approximately $3,878.00.
Motion.
Second.
Question?
Go ahead.
I was looking back, we didn't, isn't, is this the same suits that we approved in June or July?
Chris?
This will bring the total to four suits. So we have two suits, require two more, so we'll have a total of four.
So this is the same suit, this is an addition. Thank you.
Correct, yeah, no problem.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Fire department membership, can I have a motion in a second to approve the application for membership to the Woodbury Fire Department for John Hand Jr.?
Third.
Excuse me?
Look, look at.
You hands reproduce at such an incredible rate. All right. Yes, all in, well, I got a motion in a second?
Motion.
All second?
Seconded, Chris, you okay with this? Chief Burke? All right. We already talked about that today. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, renewal of employment agreements for Desiree Potvin and Rob Wyatt. So we'll take these one at a time. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign an employment contract renewal for Desiree Potvin as the village treasurer?
Motion.
Second.
Question?
Sure.
We still, we don't, I can't find a copy of those contracts. Is there a reason that they weren't put on the?
They haven't been sent back to us from the attorney, which is not this attorney here, it's a labor attorney. He did say that we could move forward with it, it's a standard agreement between an employee and an employer. So I don't know what else would need to be seen on there.
Can this be deferred to the next meeting until we have that document this evening?
Not in favor of kicking the can, I just want to get this over with and move forward with it. So by all means, vote no, if you so choose, if you so choose to do so. But I do not want to just kick it to the next meeting and the next meeting after that and the next meeting after that. So I have a motion in a second. Can I have a, all in, any other questions? All right, can I, all in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
There you go. All right. Now, moving on to Mr. Wyatt. Can I motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign an employment contract renewal for Rob Wyatt as highway superintendent?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
There you go. Can I have a motion in a second to appoint Maria Rubio as part-time assistant to the building inspector effective September 9? And I just want to say for the record, that is an absolute pleasure for the village to have Maria Rubio back in any capacity, in any department. Even if she was the janitor, I would take her back. Okay? So can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Question?
Sure.
We have received nothing in terms of the credentials or the process that was.
Maria Rubio, who worked for us for how many years, 20?
I understand. This is, this is in the building department. You know, in the past, when you hire employees, we do like to have the information available to the board before we vote on it.
She's been in the building department for 25 years. She's more than a, she's more than qualified.
Well, I question, is she credentialed?
Yes.
Are you saying as far as the civil service? I'm pretty sure.
She was approved by civil service and she held the job as full-time for 25-plus years. She retired in June. And then John requested that she come back part-time and then civil service has approved it based on her 25 years of experience.
As a building inspector?
No, 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 it's assistant to the building inspector. Not building inspector, she's the assistant to the building inspector. Same exact title.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yes, same exact title she held before, it's just this is part-time instead of full-time.
It's assistant to the building inspector.
Assistant to the building inspector. I think it says it on the agenda.
Assistant to building inspector, yeah.
It does, it does.
So I have a motion in a second, so I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, moving on to old business. A public hearing for introductory local law six of 2024, continuing the moratorium on certain permits, certificates of occupancy and approvals, was closed at our August 8 meeting of 2024. The decision to adopt the local law was pending the 239 from the county, which we received on August 21, 21, and stated it was a local determination. So can I have a motion in a second? Well, first off, let me do the housekeeping. Can I have a motion in a second to issue a negative declaration relating to this law? We did? There you go, that's done. Okay. Now, can I have a motion in a second to adopt local law nine of 2024 entitled Building Moratorium Continued and direct the village clerk to print a copy of the adopted law in these minutes?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Seconded?
Discussion?
Sure.
At the previous meeting, we had discussed, I don't know if this thing is coming through lights, but in any case, in the previous meeting, we discussed making adjustments to the law because I am concerned about the length of time that we've extended the moratorium, which is limited by both judicial precedent and state law. You simply can't shut down the community, we are not gatekeepers. We have to basically program services. And that's what I'm concerned about, the way this law is written. It should really try to be a simple extension, amending the prior local law. It should really try to be a simple extension, amending the prior local law. And as I said, I think we would be on much solider ground in terms of potential litigation if we have documentation that we have made progress and that we have a date certain that's the next phase of what we're going to do about water. The— to my knowledge, most moratoriums such as this, if we haven't done anything in two years, we are subject to potential litigation. And I also want to point out, since there was some very good comments made by the public about the issue of moratorium in sewers, keep in mind that the county had a moratorium on connections to the system, which the courts overturned. And they are simply connecting, connecting, and connecting. We have a lot of problems with potential sewer, that's true. But the immediate problem is, we have a moratorium in effect for water that needs to be done correctly if we're going to avoid lawsuits. I also wanted to speak about the issue of how most communities handle moratoriums. They do it through capital budgeting, which is to say, the community has the right to schedule improvements in the future. And that process is how you basically maintain development progress to match what you have produced for services to the community, which as people pointed out, that's what the village is here for, to provide services to the community. Sewer moratoriums are much more difficult to handle. I have had quite a bit of experience in Rockland County. And as you may know, all of Rockland County, from Suffolk-on, is pumped to the Hudson River. Rockland County did exactly what Orange County's trying to do, which is do these smaller plants on small tributaries where there's a limit on how much sewage effluent or the quality of effluent that you can deposit into the Ramapo River. And Mr. Mendelsohn is right. There is a solution. In Orange County, the solution is actually going to be that everything from Sewer District 3 is going to get pumped over to the Hudson River up in Corn— near Cornwall. Because there is a— there is a line that is available similar to what the village of KJ just did going the other direction. And that's the ultimate—the ultimate fix to the problem of how much sewage we're going to be able to dispose of. We need to have a capital budget, not moratoriums. At the moment, we have no choice, the moratorium has to continue. We can't fix it like right now, but we need to have the law that's doing it be defensible. And I don't believe the law as it's written will.
Well, if I could respond to a couple of those items, I would defer to Mickey, obviously, as to the water, but I think he's briefed this board and the public on the improvements that have been made since the last continuation of this moratorium. And I'll defer to Desiree on any capital improvements. I've done numerous moratoria across the county where the public has not set any deadlines for municipality to make improvements. That's what the public elects the board for. Secondly, there is no state law that limits the length of a moratorium. There is case law concerning lengths of moratoria. And as you requested at the last meeting, I did revise this law in the purpose and the intent, and I sent a redlined version to the board that describes why the moratorium is still in place and the improvements that have been made throughout that time. Thank you.
Mickey, if you— do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Probably none, I knew that. It's a matter of few words, if this is your first meeting, Mickey doesn't spend on much. Anyway, I have a motion in a second. Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Actually, we gotta do a roll call. Go with the roll call.
Trustee Freiband, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Frebly?
Aye.
Oh, I confused.
Trustee Fabro?
Aye.
Trustee Sariello?
Aye.
Mayor Giannamato?
Aye. Okay. Moving right along. Resolution opposing State Senators— State Senator Scoofus's legislation. I will read. Whereas it has come to our attention, the Board of Trustees of the Village Woodbury, that statements have been made regarding the potential introduction of special legislation at the New York State level that would alter and/or consolidate the existing government bodies of the village and the town of Woodbury. And whereas the Board of Trustees is concerned that such legislation may be introduced— may be introduced or considered without necessary thorough analysis and review of the many significant issues and impacts associated with such proposal. And whereas, based upon the Bill of Rights for Local Governments set forth in Article 9 of the New York State Constitution and Municipal Home Rule of the State of New York, the State of New York cannot act on its own on matters of local concern. Specifically, Article 9 establishes home rule by granting local governments affirmative lawmaking powers free from state interference. Whereas, the alteration and/or potential consolidation of the village and town of Woodbury is not a matter of state concern, thus constitutionally prohibiting the state from legislating on this issue without the agreement of the village and town. Whereas, the Village of Woodbury is governed by the village law of the State of New York and operates with the Municipal Home Rule of the State of New York. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodbury hereby determines that any proposal to alter and/or consolidate local governing bodies of the village and town of Woodbury requires considerable data gathering, analysis, and discussion within the— within and among both local government entities, which material and information has not yet been provided to the village, nor have any such discussions been had. And the board hereby concludes that it is premature for the village to support any alteration or consolidation with the town of Woodbury at this time. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodbury hereby determines that it is not in favor of making any decision on the alteration of the present— of the present government structures of the village or town, including the—a consolidation of the village with the town, without first having access to and considering the data and analysis noted, which has yet to be provided. Once again, until such a determination is made, the Board of Trustees hereby opposes any special— special legislation in this regard. So, that being read, can I have a motion in a second now to approve the resolution?
Point of order?
Sure.
The motion you just read is not the motion that was submitted to the board?
That resolution is the resolution that I prepared for the board based upon your meeting last month and was distributed to the board in your packet.
The board—the—I'm looking at the—the package—the product that was in the package that does not correspond to what the mayor just read.
Are you looking at the first one?
Vic and Sue, did you get the resolution?
Yeah, mine matched.
Yeah, mine matched. Matt, trustee Fabro?
The second email here, look.
My— my email came to the board and it was after the original meeting packet came out, and then I distributed the resolution to the board.
We got it, September 11th, 9:04 a.m.
Well, I have a motion in a second.
He's just going to his email.
I know.
You're on the email chain. Well, you're on the chain, you're right here. Yeah, you got the email, I mean. Oh, it was collapsed.
I have a motion in a second, do I have an all in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Could we discussion first? I'm an aye, but I want to.
Okay. Go ahead, trustee Fabro.
For those of you who weren't at our last meeting, I'd just like to reiterate, and a number of you came up and said it as well, I too believe having 10 members versus five serves as an important check and balance in our community on any negative influences, per se. And as was also cited, I have— we're missing—in the resolution, actually, we're missing a lot of the data and the information that would be necessary to really even consider something like this. And there's numerous outstanding questions with planning board, zoning board appointments, if those members would stay on, et cetera, et cetera. And yeah, this is— this is just—I don't believe this is going to be a good idea for our town and our village, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Fabro, so I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue, you're an aye?
I'm an aye, yep.
Trustee Freiband?
No.
No?
As I heard last month and this month, this is an issue about what we know about consolidations and what its potential benefits and drawbacks might be. Mr. Scoofus was attempting to arrange to get this information and make it available to the community so that we would know exactly what we gain by having this sort of hybrid government, there are basically five of these hybrid communities in the town, and what we might save. And so, there's a lot of data that's available to tell you exactly what those savings would be, and then you have a basis for making the decision. We are approaching this much like my granddaughter, who won't even lick the broccoli to find out whether it's any good or not. We need to know the information before we go out there and tell the world that no matter what, no matter how good it is, or how good it's for us, that in fact, we won't do it. So I'm voting no.
Well, I would just like to say that this resolution actually does say that. It says that the consolidation of the village with the town without first having access to considering the data, the analysis noticed, which has yet to be provided, okay? So it actually addresses that. I am willing to listen to anything you have, that is my job. But, in my opinion, the senator should have never rolled this out unless he had the facts and the data to support it, okay? Which, it's been what, at least two months now?
Yep.
Okay? It's been a month since our last meeting, I have yet to see anything. So at this point, first of all, I said it to CJ last meeting, I said, "Two boards with five people each needing three out of five for a potential annexation, explain to me how that is— how one board of three is going to make us better off." That—the cost— the cost savings, whatever it is, it's minimal, okay? It really isn't the big issue. The big issue for me is preserving Woodbury, okay? So this says it, and this says, "If you have information, bring it forward and we will gladly look at it." Okay? So I disagree with what you're saying. You want to vote no, that's on you, but I absolutely disagree with it.
Thank you. Moving right along, well said, trustee Sariello, under new business. A request was made by Lisa Hints, who is here someplace—
Jump in the trunk.
—of our Climate Smart Task Force, there she is, requesting approval of a public assembly permit to host the yard sale at St. Patrick's Church on October 19th. So can I have a motion in a second to waive all fees associated with this request from our Climate Smart Task Force? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have another fee waiver request. Town of Woodbury has submitted a fill permit application to the Building Department as requested that the Village of Woodbury consider waiving the fees associated with the submission. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the waiving of any and all fees associated with this fill permit application?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, appointment to the beautification committee. Our last meeting, we approved the formation of our own Village of Woodbury Beautification Committee. So now it gives me great pleasure to ask for a motion in a second to appoint Maria Hunter and another job for Maria as chairwoman—
It's another hat.
—to our beautification committee. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now I get to sign stuff. So can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the proposal from Katalis, our billing software company, to move off the server onto a cloud-based system? Now, I don't know any of this because I'm still trying to program a VCR, so I don't know any of this crap. So, all the information is stored currently on a secure Amazon server and are backed up every night. We currently pay $3,100 annually for the software and support. This would be a one-time cost of $2,500 to make the change, and then an additional $1,320 annually for the two users at 58 each per month. And those two users would be our Water Department and our Village Clerk. So, can I have a motion in a second to approve or to allow me to sign the Katalis agreement? Motion. There you go. Do I have a second?
Sorry, just one question again to recap. So you said this is just transfer from the cloud to our— or we have a cloud system, sorry? We don't have a cloud system.
We don't have a cloud, that's where we're going to.
Gotcha, and we currently use this company?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, you want to second that?
All second, oh, yeah.
She beat you to it.
Oh.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We have another question, hold on.
I have a question. I was looking at the terms of this contract and there— on page 10, while I'm not—not adverse to approving this, I don't believe the terms are clear as to what the additional costs would be, and I would like to have that reviewed before you actually sign the
Yep, that sounds fine, all right. You need to modify your motion. All right? To allow for attorney reveal and then allow me to sign after the attorney reviews and approves.
So I'll make a motion for attorney review and for the mayor to sign it and it approve.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, more stuff for me to sign, authorized mayor to sign the Tree City Proclamation. Whereas in 1872, which was by the way, the year that Neil Kraus— Neil Kraus was a young boy back then. The Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas in 2022, they commemorated their 150th anniversary of Arbor Day. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our cities increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Jackomaza, the mayor of the Village of Woodbury, do hereby proclaim, April 25th of 2025, okay? So we're— we're jumping the gun here, is the next Arbor Day in the Village of Woodbury, and I urge all citizens to—